July 1st, 2014 meeting, Jackson City Council to order. And Councilman Dodd called this morning and he was on the way to the hospital with his mother. And he had asked Reverend Russ Lester of the City Fellowship Church here downtown to lead us in our invocation. So Russ, if you'll do that, I'll lead us in the pledge. Would you please rise?
Father, we humble ourselves before you this morning recognizing that this is the day that you have made and we will rejoice and be glad in it. And we thank you for another opportunity to serve you, to serve our neighborhoods and to serve our city. Your word teaches us that you ordain all government, whether it be national or local, for the purpose of restraining evil. And so I pray for this council today, Lord, that there every decision would do exactly that and restrain evil and promote that which is good in our city. And this is no easy task. And so I pray that you would give them wisdom for it. And I do not pray for man's wisdom. I pray for wisdom that comes from above, wisdom that is full of mercy and peaceable and gentle and open to reason, impartial and sincere. This is the wisdom that comes from God. And the scriptures assure us that if we ask for it in purity of heart, that it will be given. So we ask for it today, Lord. And lastly, I want to personally say thank you for the service this council provides for me as a citizen of Jackson, Tennessee. I know that they are bearing heavy burdens on my behalf, burdens that I don't have to bear because they're bearing them for me. So I pray that you would strengthen them, make their service to our city a joy, and that you would return to them in some way a blessing that is equal to their service. We ask all these things in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, they've run out a substitute for our minute taker and her roll caller this morning. Sharon Smith is substituting for our usual minute taker. She is on vacation. We hope that Anita has a good time. Sharon, you can show all the council present with exception of Councilman Brooks, Councilman Dodd, Councilman Buchanan. They're all tied up in other matters this morning. I don't force approval of minutes of the June 3rd, 2014 City Council meeting. And council has a copy of those minutes. And if there are no additions, no corrections, we'll go ahead and accept those minutes as submitted. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and accept those minutes. Invitation for public comment, if there's anyone present who'd like to be heard on any matter under new business, if you'll let me know at that time, we'll be happy to have you to call on you and let you come up and address the council. We have one recognition this morning. First of all, let me, do we have Ms. McGee in the audience? Yes, if you would, please stand and just be recognized. She is administrative intern with Tennessee Healthcare this summer to have sent them through the Tennessee Hospital Association. She's attending the University of Memphis, will complete her master's in healthcare administration in May 2015. She's a graduate of Austin State University with a Bachelor of Science in Health and Human Performance with a concentration in healthcare management. And will be at the Jackson Madison County General Hospital until August the 1st, rotating through different departments within the hospital. So thank you for being here. Appreciate it. And we have some very special people here this morning. I think we have some young people who brought back a tremendous honor for our city and our county in West Tennessee, and that's some Special Olympics winners that are with us this morning. So let me ask Randy Zell and Sandy McDermott to come up to the podium and I'll come down and recognize these young people. We've got one en route and two are here?
No.
No. Two are en route and one here.
No.
Nope.
Their teachers are here.
The teachers are here. Why don't you come up and pick up this hat? You would?
Ms. Hamley.
Ms. Hamley is here. She come up.
Ms. Linda Harlow.
Linda Harlow. You would?
Laura Riddell.
Laura Riddell. Y'all come up. These are the teachers, the special young people who represented this city and this county during the USA Special Olympics. Who was that?
New Jersey.
In New Jersey. Drew Back in New Jersey. I have three letters of commendation that I'd like to present. The first one is to our coach. She's a member of her staff at Recreation Park, has a wonderful job. She has such a heart for Special Olympics. She is a Special Olympics coordinator for West Tennessee. She's been there for a number of years. And I'm going to present to Randy Zell in honor of coaching Special Olympics track and field athletes during the 2014 USA National Competition. City of Jackson, Tennessee. I've signed it in. Thank you. Obviously, you did a great job. I don't know which one of these teachers represent each of these. We have Dinesha Hosler, who, okay, in honor of receiving a gold medal in the 100 meter run. Gold medal in the running long jump and a silver medal in the 200 meter run in track and field at the 2014 USA Special Olympics event. So I'm going to give this to you and ask you to present that to her when you can. And then also, if you would present to her on behalf of the council and citizens of Jackson, a stick pin which has the official seal of the City of Jackson. And then also Bradley Peyton Davis. That you get too. Good for you. In honor of receiving a gold medal in the 50 meter run, a gold medal in the 100 meter walk, gold medal in the standing long jump, and a silver medal in the softball throw in track and field at the 2014 USA National Special Olympics. And if you would give that to Peyton, we appreciate that so much. And I want you to give him, him being a guy, I'm going to give him a lapel pin with the official seal of the city. So you present that to him. And then also Darius Tatum, in honor of receiving a silver medal in doubles and bache. Counsel, y'all know that. It's kind of like bache. Yeah, it's kind of like longbow. Silver medal in singles and bache and the bronze and the team at the 2014 USA National Special Olympics. So if you would present that to there, I appreciate that and I already have. And then if you would also give him the, okay, appreciate y'all doing that. And then also, Darius here. Come on up here, Darius. Just in time. Just in time. Come on up here. Come on up. Darius, welcome back to Jackson, all the way from New Jersey. Look at all these people out here. We appreciate you. Obviously, you all were wonderful ambassadors from our city. We're in New Jersey and we've just given you, awarded you your certificate. And then also a lapel pin which has the official seal of the City of Jackson, Tennessee. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to all the winners. Thank you, teachers. Thank you. Or the ordinance have a second ratings. We'll go down to item nine, new business. And we're going to have election of the vice mayor for one year term. Is there a nomination?
I'd like to make a comment, Mayor, before we do that. I want to thank the council, certainly you, Mayor, and the people of Jackson for allowing me to serve as your vice mayor for the last year. I learned so much from so many events that I went to. I learned about wonderful programs that are going on in Jackson that I was unaware of before. I certainly enjoyed giving out those civic awards for the mayor the other day. I think the thing that was the most unforgettable experience for me, though, happened in January when we had 16 soldiers from the city and surrounding area who were deployed to Afghanistan. And the mayor gave me the opportunity to go out there and to speak to those families and to speak to those soldiers. I just want to say this, since it is the 4th of July weekend. I was able to see families sad and in tears as their loved one was leaving for what they knew would be at least a year, and God forbid, but maybe they would never see them again. And I talked to each one of them. And even though they were sad and there were some tears, every single family said how proud they were that their loved one was going to serve this country. Little children said, "That's my daddy there in that uniform. I'm so proud of him." We have a wonderful country and we have men and women who are true patriots. And they don't go for honor or glory, they go for us because they love America. That was quite an experience for me. And when the commander had the soldiers stand in a circle, and he went inside that circle and talked to them before they boarded the helicopters, I heard a little bit of what he said to them. I would have never heard that or had that experience had I not been vice mayor, but I heard him say things like, "Don't be thinking about your families. I know you'll want to, but you think about your task and you think about your training and you'll stay safe if you remember your training." And then he asked me if I wanted to come into that circle and talk to them. And I got to speak to each one of them. And Mayor, I didn't shake their hand, you would have done that, but I hugged them. You might not, could have gotten away with that, but I hugged those men and those two women. And that has made me a better person. It's made me a better American. It's made me realize what the sacrifice that they're making for us. So I thank you very, very much for that experience. And at this time, I'd like to place in nomination the name of a city councilman who came on the council the same year I did, three years ago. I think he's dedicated to his position and I think he would make us an excellent vice mayor, Scott Conger.
Second nomination, Scott Conger, has been on the table for vice mayor and it must have been second. Any other nominations? If not, we'll close the nominations and council, please vote. Anybody vote for him?
Probably the only vote I got, huh?
Congratulations, Councilman Conger. Congratulations to you. Item two, under new business, is acceptance of a three-year gang resistance intervention grant, which is called the GRIT grant, match required. And I think Captain Holden is here to go over that grant with you and hopefully answer any questions that you may have.
All right. The microphone.
Morning, Captain.
Morning.
Before we get to Captain, I want to remind Councilman Conger that the last three vice mayors have ended up in the hospital. So he needs to walk very carefully for the next year since he's vice mayor. Go ahead, Captain.
Excuse me. This is actually an amendment to an existing grant, the GRIT program, Gang Resistance Intervention and Training Grant. It's through the Tennessee Office of Criminal Justice Programs. As you recall, we received this grant in October of last year. It put the Phoenix curriculum into our school system and after-school and summer programs. Built a partnership between the Police Department and the faith-based community that were still growing. Added a positive action parenting curriculum to the Juvenile Work Services Program. And the suppression activities were high-profile, over cameras that were placed in high crime or areas with a prevalence for disorder and violent crime and high intensity housing. We were given an opportunity to apply for additional funding on this grant. Programs we have are developing nicely, but we are given the opportunity to create a command center for the gang intelligence operations that would include incorporating the cameras and the monitoring. That would be monies this for one year to do that. And then it also adds a prosecutor, a dedicated prosecutor, who would be a city employee for the time of the grant, that will work under the auspices of the District Attorney General's office, focusing on crimes with gang, crimes and suspects with gang nexus.
Okay, any questions of Captain Holden as far as the GRIT grant? Think you all have a pretty good packet of information on that. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
A motion? Is there a second? Any discussion of that?
One quick question.
Sure.
The additional district attorney individual is going to be hired. Will he actually be a city employee?
Yes, it'd be much like the way our city, our assistant DA and city court is employed now.
And one other question. If that grant should run out next year, since he was a city employee, would we have to retain him? Or if not, would we have to pay him unemployment?
No, this would be for the terms of the grant. And actually, it extends the grant year. So it would be three years starting in July. Extension on that part of the grant.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from council? If not, we have a motion to second. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Item three, Mike, it's still up there, acceptance of the three-year planning grant to establish a family justice center. No match required on that grant.
Jackson was chosen by the state as an area for this because of the resources that we already have in place in dealing with family violence, domestic violence, and sexual violence. The family justice center concept was developed under President Bush. It is, it's a growing concept. It's a very strong evidence-based practice. The justice center itself is just a location where the entities that are involved in sexual and domestic violence work together, much like a child advocacy center, but more for the adult population and focusing on sexual and domestic violence. There's a whole lot of planning and coordinating that's involved with this. The state grant is actually for hiring a coordinator to get all that together. It's a three-year grant, but the third year is contingent on us being up and operating or having solid plans to be up and operating in that third year. If we're not, then we would lose that third year of funding.
Okay, any question from council on the family justice center grant?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
The vote is five to one.
Item four is acceptance of renewal of domestic violence grant.
Yes, sir. This is our comprehensive violence against women grant. This also is the Tennessee Office of Criminal Justice Programs. This started in 2005 when we first established our Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner program. It grew over several years and several renewals to encompass the Domestic Violence Unit Case Managers. This will be our, well, fifth if you count the ARRA grant, renewal of funding for this. This funding's been renewed this time for one year and is to get us back in sync with other stop funded programs in the state. Somehow, we're reporting in between years and they want to get us back reporting with everyone else, so we'll have to reapply next year. This pays for the training for the forensic nursing staff. It pays for sexual assault training, for law enforcement, advocacy, and prosecutors. And also, it pays for the contractors that work as our case managers in the Domestic Violence Unit at the Police Department.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion from council. Any questions from council?
Same question. If the grant runs out, all of these people that we're paying, what happens to them?
The forensic nurses are actually paid by the hospital. All of their, I mean, they're already employees. They're paid on call and they're paid when they're called in to do the exam. The hospital seeks to get the reimbursement that it can from the state Victims Compensation Fund for doing the exam, but we don't actually pay the nurses to do the exam. We pay for their training. We would have to find another avenue to do that. The training has been the nexus that's brought us all together to train collaboratively. So certainly, we would want to find some way to do that. That's an important part of it. The case managers are contract employees. If there's no grant, there's no funding, there's no case managers. We would go back to handling it the best we could with the investigative staff that we have at the Police Department.
About how much of that grant is actually needed for training? How much does that training cost approximately? I know I'm putting you on the spot, just approximately.
Let me think here. I want to say about $35,000 is set aside for the, specifically for the training. It costs approximately $10,000 for the basic sane-to-doactic. That's the required 40 hours the nurses have to go through. Then we host training here and that typically runs about $10,000 to host the training, but we train 75, 100 people for that money, much, much cheaper than we can send them off to The balance of that is used for in-service training. The nurses train every quarter. And then there's, we do try to send the active nurses to a national training each year to get CEUs to maintain their certification and improve their ability. If they go, they have to come back and teach in the next didactic class.
Okay, the hospital doesn't pay for any of that training. That's the purpose of this grant, right?
Right. They pay for the staff.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? We have a motion to second, right, Sharon?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Council, please vote.
And the vote is five to one.
Item five is acceptance of the FY14 JAG grant. We'll need a public hearing before we have a motion on that. But Mike, you want to explain that one to the council?
Okay, this is a federal grant. It's what we used to call local law enforcement block grant money. This is set aside with the Department of Justice each year for law enforcement agencies across the country. The amount that's set aside is determined by a formula that federal making has to do with population, crime rates, and so forth. We are what they consider to be a disparate allocation in that the Sheriff's Department provides a large part of the funding for, in support of, or a large part of the support for the Police Department in that they manage the jails and so forth. So they would add the Jackson Madison County funding together. This year, that's $65,275. And being disparate, we split that equally. $32,637 approximately apiece. Actually, $637.50 apiece. And we have to determine what we would use that money for and submit an application. And this public hearing is required as part of that process. The Sheriff's Department will, and as it has, use this funding to pay for a deputy sheriff's salary that works in court security. Police Department would use, we actually have five projects that we would fund with our portion of the money. The first being 3A enhanced and extended coverage ballistic body armor for our SWAT team. This is to, this would be approximately six sets of what we call 3A enhanced body armor that includes protection for the growing arms. It's way above what an officer wears under his uniform. And this is intended for officers that are going in to confront an armed suspect. We have several of these, but they're, they have expired. And we have several new members of the tac unit that does not have, our SWAT unit that does not have the body armor. So this won't get everybody up to date, it'll give us six sets. The next project is a, what we call a field expedient load-bearing Mala vest and supplemental ballistic capability. This is a vest carrier that in a crisis situation, an active shooter situation, that patrol officers can throw on over their uniforms. It includes some enhanced ceramic panels that would defeat rifle rounds, which we're encountering more and more often. It also gives them a place to carry extra magazines, emergency trauma dressings, trauma gear, and all the stuff that they can grab and put on in a hurry and go ahead to deal with the threat. We hope to purchase approximately 80 of those in this coming year. The fourth project, our ANSI certified face mask. These are for officer safety training when we're using sim munition. Sim munition is basically a paintball that is the same caliber as our weapons. It hurt like heck, too. But what we have now, the helmets we're using are override helmets. The rounds are going under the helmet, striking people in the face. These are actually designed to protect the officers during training. And then the last of this is an enhancement to our Criminal Intelligence Analysis Unit. These girls work off of a large amount of data. I've got one that's working with 14, 15-inch monitors. So this would be for two 20- or 22-inch desk monitors. We would also get a large screen monitor that they could see to work collaboratively on our crime analysis materials in anticipation of our Blue Impact program. That would be the JAG funding.
Okay, before I open the public hearing, are there any questions or comments from council on this particular grant? I think this is what, 19th, 200th year we've had. It's been around for a while.
It has been around for a while.
Yes, it's been by the city and county. Council, have any questions, any comments? If not, we'll open a public hearing on any, anyone who'd like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of requirements of this grant. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and...
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve and second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Captain Holden. We appreciate your seeking these grants and aggressive nature in which you're going after them because it just tends to have us, even though we have matching funds that's committed, we can still able to pick up a lot of federal funding and state funding to support our fight against crime in our city. And we appreciate you for it.
Thank you, sir.
Item six is consideration report on debt obligation, State Form CTO253 for $500,000. Eight-year capital outlay note is approved to State Patrol's Office on May 23rd, 2014 in reference to the of Jackson Resolution 2013-13 dated September 3rd, 2013.
Morning, Mayor and council.
Morning.
As I explained the other night, this is basically a formality. We already received your approval back on December 3rd of 2013, Resolution Number 2013-13. And the state requires us, after we have received the money that you approved, the $500,000, that we come back and file a CTO253 report where you're just acknowledging that we have received the money and we can proceed with the projects. We have received the money. We have not spent anything since, really, we only got the money a month ago, less than a month ago. If there's any questions concerning the note or how it's going to be used... If there's any questions concerning the note or how it's going to be used, otherwise, I just present it for approval.
Okay. Vote approve.
We have a motion for approval.
Second.
A second. Discussion from council. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item seven is consideration requests from the City of Jackson to Riverside Cemetery Improvement Association for $18,000 expended by the city for maintenance and upkeep in 2014.
Mayor Anita asked me to kind of redefine what I had put on the agenda, and I think she did send this out to the council, but what we're really saying here is in the absence of surviving board members of the Riverside Cemetery Improvement Association, Regions Bank Trust Department has determined that you, the Jackson City Council, has the authority to approve maintenance expenditures. Therefore, the subject $18,000 that we use to maintain the cemetery on an annual basis is presented to the council for approval. And Regions Bank has given you, which is sort of unusual because we are the beneficiaries in this agreement, and normally, we would not be making this decision, would be the grantor, but the grantor, the association, no one has survived at this point.
So, so you're saying Regions has said, "We as a body have the authority to do this and the funds will come from the bank?"
Yes, come from the $161,000.
Correct. Just wanted to make sure I understood.
Right, and it's really by default, Charles, because there's no other organization left to...
Well, I know. Yeah.
Right.
On the, on the $18,000 we're asking for, is that what we're spending?
Yes.
Each year? Okay, so we're just reimbursing ourselves for what we're spending then?
Right.
Any other questions from council?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion, a second. Discussion from council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Al. Item eight is consideration of contract for street resurfacing. Ms. White?
Yes, we're received on the street resurfacing project. We received two. One is from Ford Construction Company and the other one is from Delta Contracting. And we would ask that you approve this based upon unit pricing to the lowest and best bidder, Ford Construction Company.
Move for approval.
Second. A motion and a second. Discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item nine is consideration of contract for side electrical for the tennis court complex.
There was only one bid received for the electrical part of this. This bid, the tennis court complex, was bid out twice and then we negotiated with some of the vendors. The original bid on this was about $187,000 and through negotiation with JEA, who's going to do most of the work here, that reduced this bid to $20,400.
So move.
I have a motion.
Second.
A second. Discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Ms. White. Item 10, we can do, pleasure of the council here, I think you all just got a copy of those contracts. I don't know if they were in your packet earlier or not. They were? Okay, so you all seen the contract, okay.
Yes, they were the same, but probably yes, more than a big contract, about $20,000. And, let's not lie, it's a very expensive, very expensive contract.
Okay, so they're paying us $20,000 more or $20,000 less? Well, of course. Okay, you all have a copy of the contract and obviously, the state changed their mind after we got the...
Did they have a reason for that? What was their reason?
They just didn't want to pay.
We met with them about a month ago and they have done a resurfacing measuring. So the roadway used to be measured from shoulder to shoulder, have now gone in and measured asphalt to asphalt, which doesn't affect us because everything that we service to them is on asphalt.
So they're saying we maintain less area than we did before? Okay, and that's why the reduction?
Well, not necessarily. We still maintain the same, but their measurements...
Their measurements are different.
Their contract is totally different because they used to go from shoulder to shoulder, which I assume it kind of involved the gravel side of it, the shoulders, and now it's just strictly asphalt to asphalt.
Okay. All right, council, I understand you do have the contract. It will be for, for $20,000 less than the original contract that we've had for a number of years. This is for rights-of-way mowing and also the interchanges at, what, two, two or three?
We have two miles on the interstate.
And two miles on the interstate between, between those interchanges.
This is a losing proposition for us anyway, is it not?
Well, they said it's a little bit closer to break and even. Like, did you, after you all looked at the numbers and how much time you're spending fuel and employee costs, that we're getting closer to a breakeven basis, but it certainly enhances...
Well, it's beneficial to us to have it aesthetically.
That's right. It benefits the state and our district.
But it doesn't involve the bypass, is that correct?
We have ramps on the bypass. Just four to five of those ramps anywhere from Oak Creek to Channing Way, those in between. We don't, we do not mow any of their lanes. We just do the ramps that exist and give the ramps onto the interstate.
Yeah.
Okay. The only change of the contract that you previously gave us and this one that you gave us this morning is just the $20,000? Everything else is the same?
It's about the same. And they're fully discussed with us.
And they make the determination on how much we mow according to how big the streets are?
Not necessarily. We have two contracts with the state and contract one is the $162,000 that is a decrease this year and it consists of maintenance as well. There's only 5% of contract one that is mowing and...
The maintenance...
The rest of it is spot patching and sweeping. And then we are reimbursed for assaulting their right of ways whenever we have someone.
Okay.
Okay, any other?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval.
Second.
I have a second. Discussion from council. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item 11, under new business, board appointments for the Jackson-Madison County Library Board. The recommended, Greg Jordan.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And item 12, new business, there are budget amendments for this month.
All right, the first one that we'll take up is the grant that was presented to you, the JAG Family Justice Grant. This grant is $80,000, broken down among three line items. No match required for a total of three years for the $80,000 grant. This is the one that Captain Holt presented to.
Move for approval.
Motion, second. Discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The second amendment that we have will be a duplicate for year 14 and 15. Mr. Lefune has cashed in the Robertson Trust reserves and we were able to get an additional $233,912 that will be used for the City of Jackson Tennis Complex. We need to book it for the FY14 budget since it was received in June, so the first amendment relates to the FY14 budget.
So move.
Second. A motion, a second. Discussion from council. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The next amendment is exactly the same thing, but it brings it to the FY15 budget, the additional transfer of $233,912, bringing the amount in capital allowed for the tennis complex to $188,912 for fiscal year 15.
Is there a motion?
So move.
A motion and a second. Discussion from council. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The next amendment that we have relates to Wallace Road Capital. This is a project that was budgeted in FY14 but was unable to be completed by June 30. They're requesting the $8,354 be carried forward for the completion of the basketball courts at Wallace Road Park.
Move for approval.
Second. A motion, a second. Discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The next amendments that we have are something that we were made aware of last week from the FTA in relation to JTA for reimbursement grant, a budget amendment for FY14 to book the FTA grant that will pass through to JTA through the City of Jackson in the amount of $50,680. And as I shared with you at the agenda review meeting, this is something that's required that has to pass through our NPO organization.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second. Discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The next amendment brings it forward to the FY15, the remaining funds that will be left over, same grant in the amount of $30,442.10. Again, this is a direct pass-through from the city to JTA through the FTA grant.
So move.
A motion and a second. Discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And the last one is a grant that JTA will also receive from FTA for the grant period of January 1, 2014 to December 31, 2017, in the amount of $32,178. Again, direct pass-through.
Is there a motion?
So move.
A motion, a second. Discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Al. Item 13, consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So move.
Second.
A motion, a second. Discussion. Council please vote.
And it's unanimous.
Everyone have a great Fourth of July. There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.